...to order. Find me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Like, good evening, everybody. Anyone here who would like to give an invocation before we start? President? The first order of business tonight is... On favor? Do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
But... Ah. Okay.
Public hearing, I'd like to... All favor? Anyone here speak on half of the...
Forty-eight units? No. Okay. But, okay, sorry. Right, it's 3.2 acres, you had 16 units on 3.2 acres, and then you also had the commercial. And I think they felt the layout of the 16 units, some were two and some were going to be three units. Four... okay. That was too dense for the 3.2 acres, and it was going to be too close on the sightlines to the subdivisions behind them. And they just thought they were putting too much on 3.2 acres. So...
First Timmer Creek, yeah?
Well, the... Commercial is not going to be one big commercial development. It's going to be little commercial units. Right. Right. And smaller individuals, and that's... Right, and that was the point, I think, that P&amp;Z was making was you're taking what could be one big, larger commercial, putting it into smaller, little units, and as we've seen in the city at this point, those small, little bitty units aren't being utilized and they aren't being filled because we don't have the businesses to go in them. And so, they did not, that's why they did not like the commercial portion of it. And I think that along with then you, the back of the commercial was going to back up on the street side, and it just, the whole layout just was not, was not palatable at all. And, you know, I think it's rare to get total P&amp;Z denial on a development, so...
No, it was not confusion, I would definitely say that. I was at the P&amp;Z meeting that day, and that is, nothing about the residents, P&amp;Z saw that, that area right there, it was just too small for what they wanted to do. If they had a bigger acreage, it would be, I think this probably would have passed no problem. But, okay. That's not what the P&amp;Z said, so don't take everything he said correctly. So that... Yeah, he's incorrect. Yeah. Yeah.
Sir, were you at the P&amp;Z?
Yeah, so, don't...
I mean, how long do you think you need to table this? Because if you make, if you make any significant changes at all, it's going to go back to P&amp;Z, this board is not going to hear it, it has to go back to P&amp;Z. So, it, I mean, I don't know what, at this point, this board can do because you come in with any significant changes, it requires you to go back to P&amp;Z, and we don't hear it until P&amp;Z hears it again. So, it's kind of... I mean, I don't know, I just don't know if it makes sense to postpone it because we're not going to hear it if you make any changes to it. They're going to require you to go to P&amp;Z, so I just think it makes sense to take it off of the agenda and make your, make your changes, and then bring those changes back to Todd and let that go back to P&amp;Z. Because there's nothing you can do with the plan that you have in place that is going to make changes enough to, that I believe it will come through this board. So, that's... No. Well, then, I think it's up to the board whether we want to table it or not, or remove it from the agenda because it's going to go back to P&amp;Z to begin with, so... I make a motion that we remove this from the agenda and deny it as is, and let them go back to P&amp;Z if they have a new plan.
Motion by... Wait, well, this is not... So, are there any more comments? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this matter?
[inaudible] 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 Thank you.
Got me off guard. Okay, so we'll be moving. Some time on. Time to motion. My title only. Also. Open. Favor. Question from the board on this. That's the second person favor. So 2025 passed and adopted. Okay, move right along. Constant second. Favor. Attorney. Session by the board. Call vote. That's the second. For build 25, 26 passed and adopted. I've moved this into staff, officer and staff communicate. I have nothing there.
Yes, since both the public comment and the public hearing processes don't allow for conversation with the city or response by us, I wanted to take the opportunity to respond to two comments that were made. One is about the application process and timing on plans being available and a concern that there's not enough time. Our current process provides 30 days from when the applicant applies until the P and Z meeting date. So there's, the plans are available for 30 days. And then our Board of Aldermen require two readings as we discussed earlier on planning and zoning matters. And that provides for at least another 30 days before the board finally approves plans. So there is time built into that to allow for the plans to be reviewed by the public in order for you to be able to comment at public hearings, et cetera. With regard to the moratorium on apartments, I want to be clear about the process because I think there is some confusion about what occurred at the board meeting and what the next steps are. So at the board meeting, what the board actually passed a resolution for was for planning and zoning to consider the moratorium and make a recommendation to the board. They will consider that at the board meeting on June 11, thank you, and make a recommendation with that regard to the board. At that time, then it would be the board's process to adopt an ordinance approving the moratorium. So the moratorium itself will not actually go into effect until the board takes that action via ordinance. So just to be clear, there's not currently a moratorium in place. It's just been referred to P and Z for a recommendation for board consideration.
Alderman. Alderman name? So that is something that we identified the first weekend, had that power pole issue. Administrator about that. And have begun looking into, looked into it then, and I will hand over to her here in a second. But I want to say that what we found, we didn't find substantive enough satisfactory. So we have put it on our list of things to do. So I'll hand it over to the city administrator, but it is a, is a point that is well taken, one that we have already been zoning in on. I've had a few conversations with him and Kathy as well as attorney who's been around here for a while too. But I'll hand over to Kathy for commentary.
So I'll just share in Keith's comment about surprise to find that the city does not have any emergency operation plans whatsoever. Whether it's a tornado, an earthquake, a hurricane, you know, terrorists, nothing. We have no emergency operation plans currently. So that's something that we definitely need to address. I think it'll be pretty involved in putting that together. We do have a relationship with the St. Charles County Police Department. And when the tornado occurred, they asked for us to send our emergency operations manager to the emergency operations center. And I said to the, I said to Captain Hunt, well, that, I'm sure that's me. And he said, oh, no, no, you should delegate that. You needed to, you need to have somebody who's a decision maker for the city. And I said, uh huh, and that would be me. So, and then he asked us to send our public information officer to the EOC as well. And we don't officially have a public information officer to accompany you. So I will be wearing two hats for that process, but no, I agree. It was, it was a surprise to me that we don't have an operations plan and it's, it's significant and important and needs to be addressed.
Add to that, I reached out to a couple stakeholders, while we don't have that, or firm with our neighbors. This way my mind works, if this were to happen like in high school, you have residents without power like it, those guys out there. Wasn't too bad today, but I did reach out to our neighbor. I don't think they have generators, they have backup generators. We continue to develop our plan. Of including my cross. Help us develop and support our plan in the case of large, large issue where. Good action. We'll look to refine that plan. We have, have it on our list of things to do. I do think. Do I do that right now? Yeah, okay. I, I think I, you know, I saw some of the traffic about that, I think we're talking about. So yeah, let's, we're here in thoughts and. Yeah, mine. I, I do, I do like the idea. Like the idea. I'd have a few of my own as well, so. Thank you. Alderman, any other? So I've got update, I kind of talked about it. Talked about it in the first work session. That's something I brought up, then I'll bring it up now again for folks of my name. Baldwin Spring Road Technology Drive. Come a bit of a hazardous intersection due to ongoing construction, shut down the intersection of Pressure Drive and Baldwin Spring Road. That's been a couple of months now and there's. Uptick. Baldwin Spring Road. Technologies. It has been, we're past the resolution last meeting. They get to recognize stoplight. Had a discussion with Mayor Bill Hennessy. And I did learn that they are putting a traffic light up there, but they got to go without approval to take about anything. As it stands right now, the board discussed supporting the payment. Go to our residents to help resolve that problem. And then Mayor Hennessy asked me if we could, I told him, talk to the board about it and the board has come back. Going with that and help them out to make that. About that, you know, and again, you know, I did explain too, is that that road closure was entirely an O'Fallon project, all in O'Fallon. But it impacts Dartmouth area resident on the board had a discussion and. Next meeting will have a. Ordinance, I assume, it turned me, help us draft up to go into what would be a partnership. Or to come on that, but I wanted to update anybody related to that specific issue. But that, I think those are the most important things. That's one really important thing we're bringing up. And I know a lot of folks have come in here, I've never seen their faces before. And as I say at the end of every meeting, I want to thank you guys for coming out. Thank you for your interest in our city and our, our city processes. Guys coming out, please come frequently more often. We like seeing you guys out here and enjoy your commentary and help us make the right decisions up here on the board. Thank you so much. I thank you so much. That. Favor. Turn. Thank you everyone.